Okay, is everyone ready? One, we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. And we'll go ahead and start with the invocation. I believe we have Deacon Brian Walsh, welcome, Deacon. And that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Mayor Pro Tem Herman. If you're willing to stand, willing and able, please stand.
Thank you. Mayor Fitzgibbons, city council members and all present here, let us pray. Heavenly Father, as we gather today in this assembly, we turn to you, the source of all wisdom and understanding. We invite your presence among us as all here seek to serve our community with mindful hearts and just actions. In the quiet of our hearts, we echo the words of your prophet Isaiah, where God said, "I will lead you into the desert and speak to your heart." May this city council meeting be a time of introspection and clarity, where distractions are set aside and your voice is clearly heard. Guide the members of this council to reflect on their responsibilities with discernment and compassion. Speak to their hearts, Lord, filling them with the courage and wisdom needed to make decisions for the common good. May they be attentive to the needs of all people, especially those who are marginalized or in need. As the desert is a place of simplicity and renewal, help all people in this assembly to embrace humility and openness, allowing your spirit to lead all into paths of peace and justice. Foster unity among us, that the work here may bring about a flourishing of every member in our Casa Grande community. We pray that this time together will be fruitful, guided by your love and reflective of the values of mercy, truth and integrity. We ask all this through Christ our Lord, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Deacon Walsh from St. Anthony's, and thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Herman. We're gonna go ahead and start with the minutes. Oh, I'm sorry. Adriana, can you please accept for the record that all the council members are here?
So noted.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we'll start with the minutes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve the minutes for the regular city council meeting of November 3rd, 2025, and accept for the record the Arts and Culture Commission of October 7th, 2025, Planning and Zoning of October 2nd, 2025, and the Special Meeting of Planning and Zoning, October 2nd, 2025, and the Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting of October 16th, 2025, as presented.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Next on the agenda are the claims.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we list the claims report for October 29th, 2025 through November 11th, 2025. We approve those.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to accept the claims. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting agenda approval. Any changes to the agenda?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we move reports ahead of the executive session on the agenda.
Okay. Anything else?
Madam Mayor, if I can, just advise the council that I'm going to be asking council to table item I-1, but ultimately, I'd like to make a few comments at that time.
Okay. Okay, so we can get a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve the amended agenda.
A second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, special presentations. We have a celebrity here. There he is. I wonder which one he is. And I'll come down and I know Jeff wanted to make a couple comments also, but I'll, well, actually, maybe I'll read it from right here, Kenny, if you don't mind. So, as we all know, for those of you that ever see him around town, this is a special Cardinal fan. But today, we recognize Kenny Salinas for his outstanding commitment to serving the city of Casa Grande and for the positive impactful way he represents our community. Kenny donates countless hours to local causes, including his work as president of the Casa Grande Food Bank, where he helps support families facing feud insecurity. He also serves as vice president of the Pinellas County Junior Livestock Committee and sits on the boards of the Salvation Army, Casa Foster Kids, and IBEW Local 387, demonstrating deep year-round dedication to children, families and community resilience. Beyond his service, Kenny leads with humility, generosity, and a spirit of bringing people together. This year, the NFL recognized his character and community impact by naming him the 2025 Arizona Cardinals Fan of the Year, an honor that highlights not just his enthusiasm, but the positive influence he has across our region. So tonight, we acknowledge Kenny for his outstanding commitment to serving the city and for proudly shining a positive light on our community. We are all truly proud of everything you do. So, thank you, Kenny.
Awesome, thank you.
And he's been there a long time. Even when I was playing, he was there.
If you want to say a few words, go ahead, Kenny. I've just come down.
Okay, no, this is an honor. You know, I mean, like, Anthony, for many, many, many years, up until the new stadium, at, back in Flagstaff, I never called him by his name. I was always CG, CG. And that's just the love I have for CG. I always have, and so, yeah, I've been there a long time.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it is an honor. Thank you, guys. This is, I'm gonna go and hopefully represent the Arizona Cardinals in Casa Grande very well.
Thank you. And we heard you're donating so many boxes of food to the Food Bank. Is that correct?
Twenty-five thousand meals. Twenty-five thousand.
Will we give you a pin? So you could wear it proudly on your hat or your jersey?
I put it right here on my jersey.
No, there you go. And, oh, here, Jody wanted to take a picture. Do you want, can we take it with the council? Here, come right here with all the pictures.
Got front of you standing.
Hey, if you want to stand, we'll just get pictures.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Well, I've traveled several times with Kenny out of state to games. There's no more loyal Cardinal fan. But what is really neat for this community is a 25,000 meal donation for the Arizona Cardinals. The Food Bank right now is in great need. And so, the Cardinals really came through. Anthony was the one that presented the check at, when Kenny was named Fan of the Year. So Anthony, we thank you and your team for this generous donation. But the community can get involved by matching these donations and making donations also to the Food Bank and supporting the work that Kenny is doing. The amount of hours that he spends at the Food Bank is incredible. But that night, when they named Kenny the NFL Fan of the Year, and all of you can vote for Kenny for NFL Fan of the Year as many times as you would like. Also, we're hoping that Kayla Tucker is gonna be there that night as well from Casa Grande. She's one of five finalists right now for NFL Flag Player of the Year. They're gonna name two finalists to go to San Francisco. And we're hoping Kayla's gonna be one of those two as well. Wouldn't that be a great evening to have two people from Casa Grande that night honored at the NFL show? And so, but again, Kenny, congratulations. Thank you for all you're doing for our community.
Thank you all.
How can we vote for Kenny to be NFL Fan of the Year?
Go to NFL Fan of the Year.
NFL Fan of the Year.
Let's vote, question, NFL Fan of the Year. There's thirty of you up there, and, um...
The good-looking one.
Look for the hard-oned one.
Now, like I said, you can vote as many times you want. And it's pretty easy, just vote and then push on the picture you want. There are the Cardinals, obviously. And then just push, submit, and then it comes right back on. You can do it all day long. I'm asking, those and all guests reacting and watching this, you know, as, hey, you're going there to throw a couple votes a day.
That's right.
Already voted for you, Kenny.
Thank you, Kenny. Okay, the consent agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered routine matters and will be enacted by one motion and one roll call vote of the council. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or member of the public so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence of the agenda. Is there anything that the council would like to remove from the consent agenda? Okay, any staff or anyone from the public?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please, Adriana.
Councilmember Ramo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, this is the public comment section. If anyone would like to address the council, now is the time to do so. I have a couple speaker cards. We'll go ahead and start with these, but if there's anyone else, please feel free to come up. We'll start with Barbara Sundest. And Barbara, if you can give your address, please.
Barbara Sundest, 1273 East Cordova Avenue, Casa Grande. I'm gonna read this because I don't get off the track otherwise. I read Bill Coats' article in the November 4th, 5th Dispatch. It breaks my heart now that these homeless and tent people are out of our parks and out of sight, so, and also out of mind. At Laundry Love, this past Wednesday, one of our regulars, who would love to stay someplace in an encampment, like Lois talked about in the article, was, said he received citations and also he had to spend a night or two in jail. And, I mean, I know he has a partner, and together, they stay together, they help each other, they support each other. They would clean up and work in an encampment and help do it. So, help make it work. And this is what Lois said in the article, that I think we just have to do, we have to pay attention to these people. We can't just, we got rid of them from the parks. We don't see them anymore. So, we have to, we have to help them. She said, she threw a plan, she says she would like the city to follow through on a plan to set up a homeless camp, something that would benefit all of us, portable john and water. And I know that there are at least two people in the city council business that are working on a potential site. But maybe it's time for some of the people in the city, or if, like, on the city council or knowing Cardinals fan people, since they can give food, maybe they can give portable bodies. But, but for a place for them to be. And it's all of our responsibility, not just one or two people. It's all of our responsibility to help these people. Not, just, the next four days, it's gonna be raining. And what are these people supposed to do? Where are they supposed to go? And they have, there's just no follow-up. Many of these are not drug addicts or alcoholics, just people who have lost jobs and homes and have no families that they can turn to. And in fact, on Wednesday, we were doing Laundry Love on Wednesday, and we did like $1,900 worth of laundry. I mean, they did, but we helped them. On Wednesday, an elderly lady told me she has no place to live. Her family doesn't want her. And, and she, she works, she does small jobs, and she, but she's living in her car. And so, it's not just the encampment. It's the elderly women who have no place to go. And so, like, for me, I have to say this. When I, when I say to people that there is not a single shelter for men or women, it makes me feel really sad. So, we just need to help. And just imagine, in this weather, 50 degrees, it's raining, and you're living, sleeping in your car. You can't stretch out your body. I mean, I'm just begging for people that know people that can help. If you're listening, or if you're here, if there are people who can help the city council, the mayor, and Steve, because they're the ones really working on a place. So, anyway, I apologize for taking time, but...
Thank you, Barbara. Okay, next speaker card is Peter Encinas. If you can give your address, Peter.
Okay, 700 East Rodeo Road, Casa Grande, Arizona, 5122. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, city leaders. On election night, a couple weeks ago, just about two weeks ago, I was busy doing job site, and it was about 5:40, and I realized, I gotta go vote. It's gonna close at 6:00, which I was wrong, it's at 7:00, but... So I dropped everything where I was at and ran to where I voted last year, which is the Cowboy Church Pass, Val Vista and Pinellas around that area, by that fries food store, just a little bit more north. So I got there, and the place where I voted last year, there was people in that area, it's a separate building from the church. And I pulled up, but they weren't voting. There was no signs or anything. So I said, well, maybe they moved it to the church. So I went over to this guy out there, hey, how's it going? How's it going, bud? You know, asking about the voting and whatnot. He says, well, they did it here last year, but I don't see anything. We're having a little conversation. A young woman comes out, he asks her, and she's like, I don't know. It was here last year. So she hops on and starts Googling. She's, well, good news, you have till 7:00, she says. So you got a little bit of time. And, you know, here's the map. So I pulled over to the side right there at the parking lot. They were having, he actually, he's like, if you want free tacos, they have all-you-can-eat tacos over there in that building. That's what was going on where they had voted. And so, I Googled the map, and I found the next nearest place was Velago Middle School, or some Velago School Elementary, something like that. So I said, okay, it's right down the street. I went down there, I'm pulling up down the road to go, there it is. I saw cars in the park, and I said, okay, this is the spot. I can vote here. But I saw no signs. I pull up, and I see a lady walking on the ballot. I said, excuse me, ma'am. I said, where do we vote? And she's like, that's what I'm looking for. I voted here last year. And she goes, but there's a, the gym looks open, I'll go over there. So I parked, get off, encounter her, and she, I go, she's like, there's nobody in the gym, it's open, but there's not a person in there. So I'm like, what, this is weird? And so, we're just having a conversation. Well, another woman walks up, she said, what are you guys looking for? We're here to vote. And she goes, oh, it's over here. Oh, let's follow her. Again, there's no signs anywhere. We follow her to a door and it's completely locked. There's no lights on in there. And so, we're like, what's going on? I don't know. So we just had a quick conversation, you know, this is where it was last year, whatever. We part ways, I get on my phone, I said, well, there's a Baptist church down the street, they're supposed to have a poll there too, a polling place. But for me, it was Tuesday night, and I was doing security at church, and we had a Tuesday night service. So I gotta get to church, it's starting to get late on me. So I run to church, I'm in there setting up in the lobby. Now it's in 6:40, 6:45 around there. A pastor from the church comes in, and she has two ballots in her hand. She's like, do you guys know what's going on over here? I'm like, what was happening? She goes, I went to the Baptist church down the street, and there's supposed to be a polling place, and there wasn't. And I go, that's the one I was gonna go to. So that would've been the third place I would've went to. I go, the one over here? She's like, yeah, there's nothing. And I said, I don't know. I told her my story, like I just explained to you guys. And I said, so, I don't know what's gonna happen. I said, you could probably go down to the city to here, and there might be a place here to drop it off or to vote. I said, but I don't know, and I don't know if you'll make it in time. Anyway, long story short, I don't know what happened. I don't know if that falls on Casa Grande or Pinellas, but in that story, there's five of us that didn't get to vote, five votes that were not counted. It might not seem like a lot, but it's important. And I don't know how many other people were out there going, I just got off work, and I gotta go, and no, 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 no. So I don't know what the story was. I just want to advise council and city leaders that that happened, just so you're aware. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Hi there. If you can give your name and address, please.
Isabella Wagner, 1376 East Cottonwood Lane. Hi, I'm Isabella Wagner, and I'm here with the Casa Grande Youth Commission. And we would just like to let you know all of the things that we've been doing recently and that we have coming up. Recently, not too long ago, we had our Day of Shredding, where we raised a lot of money, like, just over $1,000, I believe.
Oops, sorry. Don't worry, just ignore it.
Just over $1,000, I believe. And we helped, recently, just last week, we helped McCartney Ranch with their Fall Festival, and that was really successful. And if you'd like to know, next Saturday, starting at 8:00 in the morning, we have a meeting, if any of you would like to be there.
Thank you. Thanks for coming. Okay, anyone else? Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public comments. And now, we are on item I-1. Kevin, or is this the one item you were talking? Okay, Larry?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I know that all of you are aware of the fact that item I-1 was actually tabled at the last meeting to this particular meeting. And I have shared some of the data points and information with the mayor and council. But Mr. Lewis and I met this morning and had a dialogue related about the specific item, and more specifically about our traffic signal selections in general. And I'll be asking, I'm asking the mayor and council to table this item until the December 15th meeting, where we can have a study session in advance of that to do a couple of things. Number one is to provide more specific detail and information on this intersection, on the traffic signal warrants, as well as the development in that area. And also broaden that to have discussion related to how intersections are selected for traffic signals, and perhaps the priority system, if you will, that we've used the last couple of years, really providing the mayor and council with, rather than getting in piecemeal, that you're gonna get it in one particular meeting. And so, the thought would be that if you table it to the 15th, you could consider the item following that if you so choose.
Okay. Any questions?
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move that we table Resolution Number 5845 to December 15th.
A second. Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? The only question I have, Larry, is if we say we're gonna table it, does that mean this item will have to come back on the 15th? Right.
We'll schedule it for the 15th.
Or to act, you can table it again further at that point.
Or pull it at that time or something. Okay, got it. Okay, so, any other discussion?
Nope.
Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ramo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion's tabled.
Okay, item I-2. Is that you, Kevin?
Thank you. Staff recommends that the mayor and city council approve a ward of contract to the city, for the city's annual cleaning program, sewer cleaning program, to two qualified firms, Allison Mills Contracting and Ancon Services. Based on the results of a request for proposals, we went through the evaluation process for, this is for a job order contract for maintenance services in our sewer system, specifically for cleaning. And this is a program that we've had in place and have used other municipalities' contracts to piggyback off of. So this is the first one that we've done a job order contract for. And I want to note that we typically have one company that we use for sewer cleaning. However, what we've found is sometimes they're not available when we have an emergency or something like that. Where we found Allison Mills Contracting, one of our local contractors, has really been helpful when we do have emergencies and are able to fill in when we're not able to get ahold of our regular contractor. So, we did pick two contractors this year just for that reason, so that if one's not available, we can, we can hopefully lean on the other. But this gives us a lot of opportunity to continue with our program. And we did, we did look at four different firms that submitted their qualifications, and these two rose to the top. So, this is something that we budget for each year. I believe this year, for sewer cleaning, we have $450,000 in the budget. We don't always spend that entire amount. It's an as needed, but typically, we use most of that money. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, no question, comments. We can get a motion to approve. Oh, sorry, resolution number.
Resolution Number 5849. A resolution of the Council of the City of Casa Grande, Arizona, accepting two proposals from various companies for the annual sewer cleaning program, authorizing expenditure of public funds, and authorizing execution of the agreement by the city manager.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move to approve Resolution Number 5849 as presented. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, if we can get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ramo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, item J-1. These are the appointments for the transit advisory. These, all three members were on the Transit Advisory Committee and were eligible for a second term. So we're happy to, I'm happy to recommend them. One is David Miestis, Ralph Varela, and Mike Henderson. Mike Henderson is here today. Mike, thank you very much. If you can kind of wave to everyone so they all know who you are. Thank you so much for dedicating your time. We're, you know, excited to see where this program is going, so thank you. So, if we can get a motion to approve these appointments.
So move.
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you again, Mike. Thank you for being here, too. Item K-1. Is that you, Adriana? Is that you, Adriana?
Uh, this item is the campus of the Casa Grande Special Bond Election Results for Proposition four ninety-six that was held on November fourth. This will be adopting the resolution, approving the campus and certifying the official results of Proposition four ninety-six, the special bond election as required by Arizona revised statutes. The special bond election was held November fourth, twenty twenty-five, to submit to the qualified electors of the city of Casa Grande, one ballot question, Proposition four ninety-six regarding the issuance of general obligation bonds for public improvements in the amount of sixty-seven million dollars for the purpose of parks, parks and recreation, open spaces, including aquatic parks. Following the election, the Pinal County Elections Department tabulated all ballots and has provided the city with the official results. Adoption adoption of the resolution will formally approve the campus and certify the results of Proposition four ninety-six in accordance with Arizona state law and will enable the city to proceed with next steps as authorized by the voters.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move, Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of Resolution number fifty-eight fifty-one as presented.
Second.
Second.
A double second. Double second.
Resolution number? Resolution number five eight five one. A resolution of the city council of the city of Casa Grande, Arizona, commenting declaring and adopting the results of the special bond election held November fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Sorry, Adriana, we thought you read it already. We weren't used to you talking, doing all, go through all that. So, okay, so now we have a resolution. Now a motion to approve.
Mayor Fitzgibbons, I move approval of Resolution number fifty-eight fifty-one as presented.
Second.
Okay. It has been a motion and a second, double second. Um, is there any further discussion? Okay, all now if we can get a roll call vote.
Councilmember Remo?
Yes.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yes.
Councilmember Beddelen?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Houston?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Herman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have some happy people up here tonight. And yes, maybe maybe that's why everyone's so happy. We're happy on this, on this. But you know, no, thank you for everyone for voting and, you know, of course, the, you know, the confusion, we'll just have to address that. So, but thank you. What, am I not supposed to say anything? Okay.
Given that the item was there, I think in part of the resolution, our clerk will be sending a report to the Senate. I think it's the Senate, but because it was an all male ballot, which I think is an important thing to, you know, remember, that this one was an all male ballot.
Mail in.
Mail in ballot, right. Not just male.
It was all mail in.
All mail in ballot.
Right. And so we just have to make sure in the future how we address that and, yeah. And and it was such a close margin, you know, we're definitely gonna, you know, share, you know, strategies moving forward to make sure we get messaging out on what the next steps are too. So we're working on that now. So thank you to everyone. Okay, reports, we'll go ahead and start with reports and then we'll go into executive session. So why don't we start with you, Matt?
Thank you. Just a couple of things is I got to participate in the Citywide Cleanup Day with the Rotary Clubs Project at Rotary Park. But while we were there, we saw lots of other people around town and I was driving around that morning and there were people all over the city cleaning up roads and parks. And so it was great to see. Also, this Thursday at six P M. is the territorial party for the fundraiser for Boys and Girls Clubs of the Casa Grande, I'm sorry, Seven Corridor now. It held at the Casa Grande Rack Center. And it's a free event and there'll be stuff for sale, raffles, and it's supporting either ASU or the team down south. Anyway, look forward to seeing everybody there, free event, be a lot of fun. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Anthony?
Uh, on November the twenty-ninth, our church will be, everything is free. We'll have furniture, we'll have clothes, you name it, we'll have it. Um, and it's just for our community, just giving away free items. And so I wanted to make mention of that. Also, address six forty, West Okoteo, Greater Vangis Temple. And so this is our second time doing it this year and we normally try to do it twice a year. And so once again, at six forty, West Okoteo, free items. Um, also want to say I'm so proud of Casa Grande Union High School Girls Flag Football Team. Um, they went undefeated all the way through the year. They lost the last game. Then they went to playoffs on last Wednesday, they won. And then they lost on on Saturday. So unfortunate because we're looking for great things from them. But we want to let them know that we're so proud of them and their playing ability. They were very awesome, they had injuries and yet still maintained that strength to continue to win. And so I wanted to just make mention of them, let them know that we're so proud of them. That's it.
Thank you.
Sure.
I had the privilege to attend our Community Day with artist Paige Reeser right here at the North Plaza Arch mural, right behind City Hall, right here on the north side. Community members got to paint, contribute a little bit of their paint on the wall and on their clothes and everything else we did out there. Uh, that was, that was a lot of fun. If you get a chance, go by and check out the progress. It should be completed by February. But if you go on out back there and take a look, anytime you get a free time, uh, it's a really neat project and it's really gonna look beautiful for our City Hall Campus and for our community events that we can hold back there. Also had the, went to the FFA Steak Fry. Great success. I got the opportunity to meet some of the kids and some of the community members that were volunteering their time. I even got to grill a few steaks for everybody myself, so had a blast. It was a, it was a great, great FFA Steak Fry. And that's all for me. I'm easy, no report.
Yeah, Saturday, I got to go out to the Podium Club, which I'll admit was the first time I've been out there. It's, it's a really cool place, lots of nice cars. Uh, but it was a great fundraiser for two organizations, one being the Pinal County Veterans Memorial. And the other one was Run for Blue, which is an organization that supports families of fallen first responders. But it was, it was a great time, lots of people. I was, I was impressed with how many people actually showed up. But I tell you, if you have not been out to the Podium Club, they have lots of events throughout the year. It's, it's a pretty neat place and I would suggest you check it out if you haven't been there yet.
Thank you.
So at Cactus Middle School, we're doing our annual food drive. So we have a goal of eight hundred nonperishable food items. So if you'd like to come by and donate, that would be wonderful. And we're just looking to help out our community and JHS does that and they do a wonderful job with that. So looking forward to supporting those around us.
Thank you. Okay, um, just for me, just a thank you to the City Attorney's Office, Brett, your Victims Advocate Group for organizing the Flower Garden Event. It was so nice having the elementary school kids and high school kids out here planting the flowers and there were some great presentations. And I can't remember the flag football, what's her name?
Lanise Armstrong.
Lanise Armstrong, just such a, such a beautiful, talented young lady. She was injured this year, but her words were just so inspirational to everyone. So it was really, really nice. So thank you to your group for doing that. Um, the League of Cities and Towns, as you guys know, I'm on the Executive Committee, one of twenty-five mayors that serve on this. We just had our quarterly meeting and we chose a new executive director. They're in negotiations actually with a gentleman at this time. His name is Renee Guillen. He's currently with the League and it looks like that's gonna be the new director. But it was really clear with the executive team on legislation in the future and how we want to focus on local control. And it obviously, some of the losses, you know, with some of the legislation that happened with cities, this is something that everyone wants to join forces on. And obviously, we know the impact of that. So it's gonna be, you know, just working through that with the, with the executive team there at the League. And I met today, speaking of the legislature, with our representatives, Martinez and Lopez. A lot of discussions, it was myself as well as the, my fellow mayors, Ramirez, Koolidge and Florence, that talked about the upcoming session and what we want to see and what some of the, you know, focus areas and obviously, it's things that we've been talking about. So definitely shared with them. And so I just encourage everyone, whether you're in the community, council members, just talk to your legislators, let them know some of the, you know, the issues they, you know, bring up and some of the legislation they pass. And, you know, the food tax bill has not gone away. It might come back. And so they, they told us that, so we know how that will impact us. So continue to talk to your legislators and if there's anything that you think that they should be focusing on. There was a lot of talk today on homeless, you know, just want to make sure I remind everyone that there are two different groups that are meeting monthly. One is CG Helps Coalition and the other one is the Unsheltered Person Action Committee. And so there's a lot going on in this community with, when it regards to homeless. And, um, and so the CG Helps Coalition talks a lot about the services that are in the community, whether they're, you know, food banks, you know, Salvation Army, what's going on there? We have, you know, with the toy drives that are coming up, the Thanksgiving dinner, they are offering, the Elks Club is offering Thanksgiving dinner at ten thirty on Thanksgiving Day. So if anyone would like to volunteer, please feel free, the Elks is always looking for people and that's in coordination with Salvation Army. So this is a group that's active and doing things throughout the whole community and they meet monthly. So it's the second Thursday of the month, if anyone would like to go, from nine thirty to eleven. And then following that meeting is the Unsheltered, Unsheltered Person Action Committee. And that is a little bit more focused on things that are going on specifically for the unsheltered, especially after the ordinance passed. And we have organizations that are also meeting monthly and serving our community and doing outreach, Cara, Seeds of Hope, St. Vincent's Paul, Casa Grande Alliance, Horizon Health, Community Bridges, CHIP, and then of course, the city. So Stephen has been coordinating these efforts. As you know, we're continuing to look for, you know, some type of property, something for our homeless, some type of transition center or transition space. And that is still continuing to move along. And these agencies have been really, really helpful and on board. So it may not seem like things are going on, but there's a lot of dedication to address these issues. If you want to know more about some of the initiatives and resources, the city, Deb has done a great job and Stephen on putting these resources on our website, especially with everything going on with food insecurity and the economy and everything. We've been trying to update all these resources and there's pages of different organizations, things that, you know, how people are addressing them and resources that are there when it comes to meals, foods, employment, transportation, health, there's, but it is updated and we're continuing to ask our nonprofits to provide us with accurate, updated information so the community can see that all of the resources and activities that are going around, you know, around this issue. So just wanted to update you all on that. And then, you know, Casa Grande Union, you know, there was a lot of activities going on with Casa Grande Union, the flag football, great game. I went to that game, it was unbelievable. So I'm, you know, super bummed that they lost, but they had a great game last week. The Casa Grande Union Band, I went to their state competition and they won third place, which is amazing. You know, they're back on the five A division, which is the biggest schools in the state and they were amazing. And I know the Casa Grande Cheer Team won first and third division. They're in a coed division this year and so they're gonna be going on to, to state. So, um, so Electric Light Parade's coming up, December third. And I think the only other thing, couple other meetings, ASU Economic Forecast, they have an economic luncheon every year to kind of show where we are, which we all kind of know where we are when it comes to the economy. But, you know, in the end, they say that United States is pretty resilient. And so even though all of this is going on, you know, we are, we are pretty resilient. We're just kind of getting through all the effects on the tariffs, you know, the smaller job openings these days and inflation. So that was a good, I'd be happy to share anything more with you all. And the Canadian Commission, you know, they're, they're concerned with the number of Canadians that, or lack of Canadians that are coming over like they used to when it comes to buying homes, you know, winter visitors. And so they're trying to attract a younger generation to consider, you know, coming to Arizona, since, you know, a lot of people aren't coming with, because of everything going on. So anyways, that's about it for me. I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. And again, if you want to help, you know, there's our food banks are definitely looking for more contributions and donations. So if you're in that giving mood, please, there's, there's so many of them out there that can use your help. So thank you and everything. And we'll go into Executive Committee. So if I can get a motion to go into?
So move. Second.
Okay, um, all those, motion a second, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Sorry, I know I was talking fast.